I would like to call the regular meeting of Erie County Council to order tonight at 6:10 PM in Albion, Pennsylvania. And would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Councilwoman Shauerman, would you please lead us in the optional prayer tonight?
Yes. What I have tonight is more of something to think about, and it's words from John Lennon. And it says, "When I was five years old, my mother always told me that happiness is the key to life. When I went to school, they asked me what I wanted to be when I grew up. I wrote down happy. They told me I didn't understand the assignment, and I told them they didn't understand life."
Thank you for that. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Schank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
Before we have the hearing of the public, since, as I mentioned earlier, this is the first meeting that Erie County Council has had in person in well over a year. I think all of us are glad to be back, relieved to be back together in camaraderie and fellowship and working together in collaboration. Certainly, we want to thank our staff, Nicole and Doug Smith, as well as our financial advisor, Amy, and our solicitor attorney, Talari Coe, for all the work that you do on behalf of the Erie County taxpayers and this council. It's not easy to take the show on the road, so to speak, and we appreciate all the extra effort that you guys put in in doing that. So, thank you for all of that. I also want to welcome back Dale, our editor, producer, writer, you know, man of our town, who helped make us look good. This is his first meeting back taping since we've been doing Zoom meetings, so great to see you and thanks for being here for us and welcome back. With that being said, certainly, you know, County Council has had a tradition of taking the council meetings on the road during our summer sessions, and we try and get out to the districts that are the farthest away from the courthouse and hosted by the representatives from those particular districts. So, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Ellen Shauerman for your efforts in arranging tonight and working with the borough of Albion and all the other folks out here to make the meeting happen tonight, and would like to turn it over to you on behalf of all our colleagues on councils to do a welcome.
Well, I do want to welcome everyone that came here tonight and took an interest in coming to a county council meeting. It's not only nice to be with people in person again, but it's a pleasure to start our council meetings out here in Albion. And I would like to especially thank everyone from the Albion borough in helping us arrange this and making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shauerman. Next on our agenda is the hearing of the public. As I had mentioned earlier, if you called in, you will receive five minutes if you're on the agenda. If you are not on the agenda but would still like to speak, we will recognize you and you will have three minutes. And I think we're going to try and have people come up to this corner so your voice can be heard on the microphone above. So, first on the agenda tonight is Lana Reese. Ms. Reese, if you would come up and give us your full name and your municipality, and I'll begin your time then, and then if you could, I'll start over there.
My name is Luna Lana Reese, and my municipality is Mill Creek.
Thank you.
For all those who are wondering, yes, my parents were hippies. My brothers are Genesis, Kismet, Abel, and Micah. That everybody recognizes my first name is Luna. My middle name is actually Lana, which is the name that I go by professionally and what I've kind of been called my whole life. So, if there was some confusion, and just to add to that confusion, my parents chose two names that have one letter difference, so that does come up in your vocabulary too, just to clarify those things. I really wanted to thank council for your interest in learning more about child welfare. The history of child protective services has been a struggle between protecting child children that we all often care about and balancing the rights of their parents and their responsibility to be good parents. As one council member did point out, the first child abuse cases were filed under animal cruelty cases, and this is because children were viewed as the property of their parents to do with as they pleased. Parents' rights were really balanced with protecting their children. Most often in our laws, they use terms like imminent risk or causing severe injury or death. As we all know, those are minimal standards, but those are not the standards that we believe to be the best standards to protect and raise our children. This model has really been described kind of in layman's terms as a firefighter model rather than a fire prevention model. So, a lot of times, offices of children and youth could not go out to protect children until the injury or a risk had actually already occurred. We know that this is not the best that we can do. We know that in the fire prevention model as well, it's one thing to go out when people are playing with matches and things like that, but it's a whole nother step to go out and really do fire safety and really prevent those problems before. And I think we can all see that model as it occurs in our current climate. And perhaps as a society, we have a difficult time understanding that child abuse isn't a one-time incident, but really a culmination of a lot of risk factors that go into the point where the child is injured or hurt. What we really want to do is to start when the problems are at a smaller scale, start when things are preventable, so that we can go out and make sure that those children don't have to go through the traumatic experiences of being abused or neglected or taken away from their parents in the homes that they know. We can do better and we will do better to stop this before the catastrophic outcomes occur. The 29 positions that we've requested will help us move in that direction. We know that this is the direction that the federal, state, and local child welfare and child protective services really are wanting us all to go in. We know that we can do this, and we are certainly committed to being able to act on behalf of the children, to protect them, and also act to help these parents who understand that parenting is a very difficult job and really need that help and support before it becomes something that nobody wants to be involved in. As a system, as a society, we know that there is a better path that helps us balance our mission to keep kids safe and to prevent child abuse and maltreatment. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Next on the agenda for the hearing of the public, who will receive five minutes, is David Bazneck. David, if you would give us your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
Absolutely. David Bazneck, curfew, pencil, thank you. Council, thank you for your time this evening. Very appreciative of this, and I'm also very appreciative of how you're responsibly trying to look into how to go about potentially expanding the Office of Children and Youth by 29 positions. As a taxpayer, I really appreciate that. Tonight, I stand up here to support creating these 29 positions within the organization. Myself, I've been a paramedic for close to 20 years. I've been there for those catastrophic events. My wife and I about two years ago entered the foster care community world when we became foster parents and have got to experience the system firsthand. In fact, even just today, I spent an hour and a half in court for our placement and I've spent a great deal of time on the phone with our caseworker. And I have to tell you that even being a paramedic for 20 years, being in the system, and I'm going to tell you, I've been from, when it comes to child welfare, I've been on cases that have ranged from, I'm cutting diapers away that were on a child for a week plus, to pulling them out of their crib and performing CPR on them after they've been traumatically injured, with a brain injury. And I will tell you that in that 20 years of experience, nothing really prepared me for what I see as a foster parent. And the caseworkers and the individuals that we interact with on an almost daily basis, I could not express my gratitude in how hard that they work for their, for the kids. And so, being that this is really about taking a proactive approach, I feel that that's the appropriate direction for this to go. Coming from my background in medicine, people live longer today because we treat medical problems ahead of time before they come to a head. That's why we live longer. It's not all the time. It's not 100%. People still have heart attacks, but at the end of the day, we prevent a lot with preventative care. And that's where we really need to intervene now when it comes to child welfare with abuse and neglect, is get these experts in sooner and quicker because it's about making our families whole again. The issues that we face in society today start at home. They start with how we're raised, and that's what this directly can help address, is address the issues that we have at home. If we can address it early on, imagine the savings that it could be. If you're looking at it from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we spend $13 million a year as accounting in placement services. Even say we decrease that by 15 or 20%, you're talking like $2 million. I mean, that well pays for the 20% split that we would have for those positions, but think about what the next generation looks like, our kids, our grandchildren, what that looks like moving forward, because that's what this is about. This is about progressing our society forward to make sure that our county is one that people can look at with pride and that people know that when they live in Erie County, they're taken care of. And that's the security that we want for children, because you know what? It doesn't matter what religion you are, what race you are, what creed you are, there's one thing that everybody agrees on, and it's the passion that we have for children. We know that children are the future. And children are going to pick our nursing homes, right? Someday? It's okay to laugh, it's a little bit of humor, so. But, but in all seriousness, that's what this comes down to. We might not see it today, and it's going to be something to where we slowly got to turn, but when you look at our child abuse numbers versus our population of children or individuals under the age of 18, child abuse numbers are going up, population's going down. There's something wrong with that. It's slow, but it's there, and we got to right the ship. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity that you allowed me to speak tonight. I encourage all of you to support this as a taxpayer, as a human being, as a first responder. You know, I'm behind this 100%. If any of you would have any questions about my perspective, Director Reese has my contact information, feel free to reach out. And also, I'd also like to throw out there too, I have no special interest in any of this. In fact, this is the first time that I've ever seen Director Reese in person, and frankly, most of you, I think, in person, other than Councilman Horton, who visited the organization I worked for about a month ago. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is Brittany Burlingham. Brittany, you will have five minutes. If you can give us your name and municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
My name is Brittany Burlingham, and Erie County.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for having me. David, once again, thank you for your perspective from the foster parent. I currently work at Erie County Office of Children and Youth as foster care liaison and an ongoing caseworker, so I am working very, very closely with our foster parents that we are currently working to open and work with recruitment on. I personally, I grew up in the foster care system, so this is a very personal thing for me. I was entered the system at the age of seven, and I was adopted at the age of 11. My parents fostered for years. My husband, who I eventually went on to marry, his parents fostered for years, and then we in turn became foster parents ourselves and adopted our daughter from Erie County. So, this has literally been my entire life, and it's something I have worked to continue to grow in. I am currently working on my master's degree in social work. I have a degree in social work, or a bachelor's degree in social work currently, and I'm at Edinburgh as a grad student right now. So, I love social work as a whole, but child welfare is my heart and my passion, and it's something I've always just really loved to see be a part of and grow. As a caseworker, I can tell you that I am in the trenches of this field every single day. We are constantly on the go. We work in kinship, we work with foster care, we work with older youth, we work with interstates. It is just like this ongoing process that never stops in our job. The issue is, is we're like a sinking ship right now, though. We are so understaffed, and there are so many cases per caseworker, like we're holding 15 to 18 cases per worker. And when you think about the amount of children alone, that could be on just one case, I mean, we have sibling groups of four, six, nine, I'm not going to lie, eight, that's a lot of children to be responsible for. You know, that's a lot of work to do when you are in the field of this family, and then if you also, you know, when you think about, we have such a lack of foster homes right now, we can't place kids together. Kids are being placed all over in different homes. They're being ripped from their families, they're being separated from their siblings. And we, as caseworkers, are doing our very best to ensure that they, that that doesn't happen, but we, we're powerless at this point. We have no choice because we're undermanned and we're not able to do what we need to do for the sake of our family. And to go back to the amount of cases we're carrying, like, we're juggling all these balls, and what happens when we drop a ball or we miss something significant, it leads to child fatality. And I can tell you, as a caseworker, I have not personally experienced this, but no caseworker wants a child fatality on their caseload. No one wants to deal with that. But, we don't really have the manpower to ensure that we are doing quality casework on an everyday basis. As a caseworker, in a day, I can come in, and in one moment, I'm an ongoing caseworker working with my families. The next moment, I'm working with foster care providers who are trying to license homes and work with us to make sure we have effective, quality foster homes. And another moment, I'm writing a home study for a kinship, a grandparent who wants to take in his grandchild, but this grandchild is in a whole other state, so we're working with other states. And then the next moment, I'm dealing with my supervisor, a case is blowing up. We're doing all of this, like, as one person, and it's really overwhelming, and there are just needs that we need help, we need support. We need to focus more on foster care recruitment because of our low homes. We need to be ensuring that we're getting kinship identified because we don't have foster homes, and the goal is, we're supposed to be pushing for kinship. But the thing is, is we don't have the time to identify appropriate kinship. We don't have the manpower to do so. So, kids are going to shelter or any kind of congregate care. And then we have the family findings, that's coming up around the corner in October, and we're, our job is to get kids out of congregate care, but the problem is, is we don't have anywhere to place them. We can't do that. We need people, we need more specialized units in our agency, for one, who can kind of divvy up all the responsibilities that one caseworker is carrying right now. So, I encourage, I encourage the council to really consider where we're coming from, us that are in the trenches every day. We want to ensure child safety, that is our job. The children are the future, as David mentioned, and we are responsible for ensuring that that happens, but we really need the help, and we need the support, and we need the bodies to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the last member of the public that is on the agenda and has five minutes to speak. At this time, if there are any other citizens to be heard, you will have three minutes to speak. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard tonight? And finally, are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda to our next item, which is... How moved it prevents from the last second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Horton, second by Councilwoman Clear. Any comments or questions for members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are reports from county officials. Mr. Scarver, does the county executive or her designate have any report to see?
Not this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Next on our agenda is a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Kim Clear, if you could give us your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, June 24th, 2021, and I am submitting the following items to the agenda. In old business, I'll be submitting A through C and E, and in new business, I'll be submitting items A through F and H through I. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Clear. Next, our report is the Personnel Committee. Personnel Chairwoman Mary Rennie, if we could have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, June 24th, and for tonight's meeting, I am submitting to the agenda old business D and F and new business item G. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rennie. Next on our agenda are citations. Council at times recognizes members of our community for their efforts and, in many times, for the life and memorial of their life that they have lived here in Erie County. Tonight, Councilman Brian Schenk has a citation for us. Mr. Smith, if you would read the citation for Mr. Mark Miller, and then Councilman Schenk has some comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Miller, 1973 to 2021. Whereas Mark Miller left this world behind on June 11, 2021, at the age of 48 years, Mark was born March 24, 1973, to Robert H. and Barbara A. Miller in Erie, Pennsylvania. Whereas Mark was a graduate of Northwestern High School, class of 1992, after working various positions at Lake City Homes, Emsco, and Prescott Downs and Casino, Mark found permanent position at West County Paramedics as a wheelchair transport driver where his passion for helping others could shine. Whereas Mark began a service to the community in junior high as he became a firefighter. As an adult, Mark became an emergency medical responder. He served the Cranesville Volunteer Fire Department, Albion Volunteer Fire Department, and most recently as lieutenant and captain at Latia Volunteer Fire Company. Whereas Mark was fun-loving, free spirit, he was a social member of Engine House 39 in Edmuro, loved spending time with his family and friends, enjoyed trips to Raceway 7, and took great care in working outdoors, Mark and his wife, along with Councilman Schenk, were involved in Victory Ride, a motorcycle event offering individuals with disabilities the freedom to ride a sidecar. And whereas Mark's passion for life, compassionate spirit, and kind soul will be missed by his loving wife Erin Fitzgerald Miller, sons Austin and Caleb, sisters Karen and Julie Miller, his brother Michael Miller married to Sandy Diamond, nieces Paige Miller and Jordan Scavo, nephews Marcus Scavo and Dakota Houston, and many close friends, Mark was preceded in death by his parents and a special friend, Bill Melius, and now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join Councilman Brian Schenk as he celebrates the life of his brother-in-arms, Mark R. Miller, may he rest in peace, and witness whereof, we have set our hands on the seal of Erie County this 29th day of June 2021.
Thank you, Doug. Now, for those folks that don't know what a citation looks like, this is what they look like. Now, there are advantages to Zoom, there are advantages to in-person. Mark's lovely wife Irene is with us here tonight.
Irene?
Irene, sorry. I'm sorry. Frank can hold this tray. This will not fix how you're feeling. All this is, it's something from us to you that goes in the record of Erie County to remember your husband, and I call him a friend. This is a nice dotted person, and I'm watching. Sorry for your loss, Irene.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman Schenk. Next, we have a report from the Ad hoc Committee, the Council Forum, on Ordinance 44, which is the OCY needs-based program revisions and new positions. I want to thank all the members of the committee for their service, but I want to recognize now the chair of the committee, Councilwoman Mary Rennie. Mrs. Rennie, I know you have a report tonight. If you could please give that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairperson of this council committee, I think I can speak for all of us when I say that we bring many concerns to the table, we take our responsibilities very seriously, not only to the taxpayers, but in the interests of the community at large and in the interests in the lives of our citizens. We brought many concerns to the table, and I would say we still have concerns, we still believe that there are issues, but we have found that it will be possible to work towards resolving those issues even as we go along. We brought a long list of tough questions to the table for everyone involved, but in the end, though, we found that perhaps the only thing tougher than our questions were some of the answers we were getting. Erie County has seen a steady troubling rise in reported cases of child abuse and neglect over several years, and even as cases in most other counties declined, we saw an uptick in Erie County. Knowing that crimes against children are increasing in our own backyard is bad enough, but what's worse is knowing that we aren't meeting the minimum state standards and that we've been evaluated as falling short before. Going even by statements from the Pennsylvania Auditor General in two separate years, which identified shortcomings, and the Pennsylvania Council on Child Welfare, we are hearing and have heard numerous times that Erie County caseworkers and staff are stretched dangerously thin. Some might say, so what is new? We've certainly heard the complaints about workload from other departments of the county, which is also frequently true. The difference here is that workload consists of more than paperwork and more than numbers. It's about human beings, human beings that are vulnerable and powerless against those that are abusing them. There have been plenty of warning bells, as many as 70% of Pennsylvania child fatalities or near fatalities have involved cases that had been previously reported to offices of children and youth around the state but were screened out. And why? It's for a lack of staffing to handle it. The frightening thing for us in Erie County is that the majority of the nearly 10,000 referral calls that our Office of Children and Youth get annually end up being screened out, as many as 6,000 cries for help coming from our own children. With these sorts of numbers, of course, there are children falling through the cracks of our system, because in reality, they're more than cracks, they're more like sinkholes. The majority of local county tax dollars go to pay the costs of our courts and our prison system. Beyond that, county government is most about human services, and in all, we are talking tens of millions of dollars every year to address every type of social problem, but these social problems most often began in childhood and even infancy. Being an effective public official isn't just about saying no to all new requests for funding, it's about spending wisely, it's about setting priorities for the good of our community. of our community. So when I hear that the state is finally trying to get ahead of the curve, trying to be proactive in helping children, and that they've already agreed to put up 80 cents of every dollar of cost that we incur in Erie County for these 29 positions, I say yes, and I also say that it's about time. Putting the investment where it belongs, where the problems start, is the right thing to do. We should be looking at what will make a difference beyond next week or next month. Are we going to see an immediate savings because of these 29 positions? Of course not. We are in this for the long haul, 10 years, 20 years, and maybe even beyond. This is an investment in our children and their future, and that makes it our future. It's the right thing to do. I will be voting in favor of this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie, and I also want to thank Councilman Scott Rastetter, the liaison to OCY, and Councilman Horton, past chairman of Erie County Council and an advocate for many, many years for those who are at risk and particularly those in minority population. The work that you guys have done on this on behalf of council in Erie County is commendable, and we very much appreciate the additional work that you have done on this. And I also want to thank our solicitor, Tom Talarico, for his work and his input with his assessment of this with his letter to council. So, thank you for that. Are there any other members of council that have a report this evening? Seeing none, I have myself two brief reports as comments. First, as I mentioned, we don't have this as a citation, but I believe that it is noteworthy to recognize Malik Moffitt, Erie native and very proud Pennsylvanian and American and Erieite, who had an opportunity to represent his community at the Olympic Trials last week in Eugene, Oregon, as a long jumper. So we commend him for his efforts and excellence and his continued quest for his dreams. Most importantly, I recognize him because he's my son's best friend, and I've known him since he was five years old, and I couldn't be more proud of him. And I know that his parents, Chad Moffitt, his longtime coach, a track coach at prep, his strength coach, Charles Heidelberg, Coach H, and his mother, Felicia William Presley, are just very, very proud of how Malik has represented this community. So I just want to say, commend him tonight for those efforts. Also, I'd like to report to council that before we have another council meeting, I will be traveling on behalf of council and on behalf of CCAP, our Pennsylvania organization, to the National NACO Conference in Maryland. There's a real significant reason to be there this year and participate, and that is that Pennsylvania is putting forward a member of our state organization, CCAP, to be a national officer and would make his way to chairman, and that's Christian Leinbach, Erbs County Commissioner. Pennsylvania is one of the most active and largest member of NACO, and ironically, Pennsylvania has never had a national president, and this is one opportunity that we will have to do that. It's a real significant honor for our state and really significant on the national level. It's an important organization that we belong to and participate in, and then I will also be participating in our CCAP conference the first week of August, as I know other members of council may, but I just want to bring both of those up to inform council, but I also want to encourage, particularly as we're coming out of the pandemic, the newer members on council, the importance and significance that both CCAP and NACO have and what they provide to us as a nation and a state. Bipartisan effort to work together in unity to get the work of people done, and I encourage, I encourage council members and councils to come to continue to be involved in both NACO and in CCAP. Erie County has always had a strong presence in both of those organizations, and we need to continue to do that. So I encourage future councils, and I know Councilman Horton has been active and attended many meetings, and Councilman Rastetter has just come back from a leadership conference. So these are important connections that we make and understand the work that's happening both around the state and across the country. Thank you for that, and that concludes all of our reports. We will now go to old business, and first on the items of old business, which is a tabled item, Resolution Number 10.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clear.
I move to take item A, Resolution Number 10, off the table.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. At this point, are there any questions or comments on this particular item? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to bring this off the table?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Now that we have this item off the table, it is up now for a formal vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clear.
May I please make a motion to take a vote on Resolution 10, 2021?
Our second.
Thank you. We have a motion for a vote and a second, a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. So a yes vote on this particular item would be to accept ZNA, a no vote would be to turn down ZNA, as discussed earlier. I just wanted to make that clarification for council members, and I'll look to our solicitor, Mr. Talarico, that's correct.
Everything is correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Horton, Councilman Horton, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to see this moving off of the agenda, and I will be voting no to not select ZNA. Initially, I supported, even endorsed, ZNA. I find nothing wrong with this county firm. In fact, they've done really, 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 really great work for, on behalf of the county, with our care system. That said, I have listened to the arguments and discussions from both the administration and our colleagues, and I tend to be heavily, not always, unusual with our solicitor. So I just wanted to note that our voting down of ZNA has nothing to do with their performance, because they perform very, very, very happily for Erie County. It's more of a conflicted situation or proceeding, so we don't want any perceptionism that we're resolving chaos or resolving more questions. But ZNA has performed adequately. Erie County is going to move on with a governor county firm who had, has some history, who passed, and who, too, will perform badly as well. But I won't be voting for ZNA at this point in this ordinance, Resolution 10.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Any other questions or comments from members of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Rennie.
Thank you. I, too, am glad that this is coming off the table, and it is time to take action on it. I will be voting in favor of ZNA, however, knowing that I will likely be in the minority, so it's a respectful difference of opinion. I have not been convinced that the finding of conflict of interest is well-founded. I don't see that they will be reviewing their own advice. There may be some perception out there, it doesn't mean that it is accurate. And I'm disappointed because I know that they are highly regarded throughout the state and will be giving advice to other counties who are in the same situation that we are. However, I know that we do have other options, and I will be looking with interest at this new option that has been brought to the table, and I appreciate having another choice as well. So my thanks to everyone involved in making that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other comments or questions for members of council? I'm just going to make a few final comments, and that is, for the public here to know, this got logged down, as Councilman Horton suggested, in what some consider to be actual conflict of interest, ZNA audits the Erie County budget, our annual budget, and they do a fantastic job with that. I don't think there's ever been any complaints about the performance of ZNA, but when we're dealing with the federal funds and state funds at this level, with all of these different programs, there has been concern of members of council that this conflict of interest was just a little too pronounced for them. So we tabled this item, we've asked our financial advisor, Amy, and our solicitor, Attorney Talarico, to do a lot of work on this, which they have. I know that the county executive and the administration have been very satisfied and, you know, was very much in the corner of ZNA to continue doing this work, but I had met with the county executive, and her and I had discussed that we did not believe that we could come to a resolution to get this passed with a majority vote, so it's been sitting on the table. And at this point, we are beginning to be ready to move forward with the ARPA funds, or at least beginning to get the framework of those funds allocated to different silos. And so the county executive and I then came to an agreement that we would remove this from the table and then look at another firm that has done business with Erie County and has similar expertise. So that's what council is doing with this item tonight, and we now have this with a motion and a second. So, Mr. Smith, could we have a roll call vote, and a yes vote would be to hire ZNA, a no vote would be to not hire them. Mr. Smith?
On Resolution 10, Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
No.
Mr. Schenk?
No.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Chairman Anderson?
No.
Resolution 10 fails?
Thank you, and just one final comment. We have been working with the administration, and they will be bringing down a resolution at our next council meeting in July. We do still have two other items on the table on council's agenda, so I would ask if there is a motion to take either one of these items off the table this evening. Seeing none, we'll continue to move forward to a second reading of ordinance number 27. Oh, I'm sorry, that's still on the table, and now that we're there, Attorney Talarico, I know you have some information to present to council, if you would please give us your report, we would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The council did a copy of my last letter directed to Ms. Monica Nebr. Well, I heard from her earlier this afternoon, and they've accepted all the requests made in the letter. So, really, this could be removed from the table. I have drafted a letter as well, but it hasn't gone out yet, but it identifies the news bank contract as three separate documents that should be read together, and that would be the news bank license agreement, the invoice, which has been amended, and then my letter, which would be incorporated, the terms would be incorporated, the main agreement. So you did see that they, for some reason, gave us a $20,000 discount. So at such time as council decides to remove it from the table, vote on it, there will be some amendments that will have to occur, exhibits attached to the resolution, the amount that's being paid should reduce somewhat, and there are a few other, you know, more cosmetic things that will have to be amended, but otherwise, we have the best of an agreement that we could manage under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Talarico. Are there any comments or questions, Mr. Talarico, from members of council tonight? Okay, seeing none, thank you for that. Next on our agenda is a second reading of ordinance number 44. Mr. Smith, could we have that entitled on, please?
Second reading of ordinance number 44, 2021. 2021 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget revised expenditures of $811,466 for creation of 29 positions approved in the state's needs-based budget.
So who?
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any comments or questions for members of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Rennie.
This is a motion to remove it from the table?
No, this is a second reading, and we would be voting.
Okay, I thought we had to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is my fault, this is on the table. So, Mr. Horton?
I move that this, the second reading of ordinance number 44, we can move it from the table, put this back on the table.
Thank you, thank you, so we have a motion to remove from the table by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Now that we have it removed from the table, I would entertain a motion.
I move that vote of the second reading of ordinance number 44 be reconsidered for passage.
Thank you, we have a motion by- We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Schauerman. Are there any comments or questions for members of council?
Comment?
Councilman Horton, please.
Yes. As I indicated, that finance and personnel, the comments the chairman made in her report when she had confirmation, we had some serious questions. We've got answers to a lot of them, and a lot of them we agreed to work towards really in this situation. I will be voting to support this ordinance tonight. And without beating up on the OCY personnel, it's a fantastic job. But I find that 60% or better of the children, African-American, they're being moved or they're actually reported or in the system and that there in fact is no data being kept on race is very disturbing to me. And that articulated to both the director of Human Services and the director of OCY, they offer us instant remedies that we'll be able to aggregate some of that information. We'll be agreeing to work closely together so that we don't have to make these decisions based on information from my government county and our county, such as it is with all the data that was presented to request this to nine physicians was not in fact preponderance of most of the data of the counties that we know that Erie is in place. And so not only am I going to vote to support this ordinance, but Carl's been here a little while, he knows that my office is always is, always will be as a county legislator on Human Services. And I live there all too often to get into the economic development plan. But I believe that the core county government is, always will be, always should be, Human Services. And I believe that there is no greater resource than infrastructure, the data of the citizenry, and for sure, data of our children. And I urge my colleagues also to support this. I voted this pass instead of mine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. And Councilwoman Schauerman, do you have anything else?
I was just going to say, I talked about it on Thursday at our meeting, and my other job is a nurse. And I have witnessed firsthand how the cases in Erie County are escalating at an unbelievable rate. And I have seen firsthand how OCY is completely overwhelmed with the requirements that are made by the state and what they have to do. It's just literally unbelievable. And I also will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Councilwoman Clear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a mandated reporter, as a public school teacher, I have had to make the phone calls to OCY to report child abuse. And there is not enough that we can do to end this cycle. And with that, I will be voting yes. I will be supporting this for the safety and livelihood of children. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear. Any other comments from members of council? I would like to make a few comments. And, you know, I appreciate once again all the work that's been done by my colleagues, particularly in this case, Councilwoman Rennie, who chaired the committee, and past Chairman Horton, who has been a very strong advocate, and of course, Council liaison Rasstetter. They're dedicated public servants to this community, and they're dedicated to understanding and learning and researching about the issues that are important to this community. So the rest of our colleagues can rest assured that when they come back with a report, the work has been done, the questions have been asked. But the general public needs to know, as we move forward, why we're moving forward and what that costs us. This is a program that the state has moved forward. The failure to implement the program, putting millions of dollars lost in grant money that comes into our community. And although not all of these particular positions are mandated as such, they do have the strings attached that if we do not follow through with the changes in OCY and to change in a proactive way the outcomes of this escalating issue, our funding could be at risk. And that would be at a time when these issues are escalating and we cannot afford to have them at risk. The state comes forward with 80% funding. We, as the fiscal responsible people of Erie County, have to make the decision, not only what's right for the community, but how to expend that money. And we, the taxpayers, will be responsible for 20% of that money. But the continued escalation of this issue costs the taxpayers of this community so much more. Millions and millions of dollars lost within the system because the system continues to cycle. And I won't repeat many of the things that my colleagues said, but just support what they have said. And the taxpayers should know that there is a cost to being a resident of any community. And that is to take care of those that cannot always take care of themselves. And that goes far beyond any financial cost. That goes to a much deeper part of being a citizen of any community. So again, I thank all of the folks at OCY and the directors for their dedication and commitment in pushing forward on this. I know it's not always easy dealing with council, wondering where are they going. Usually it works out in the end. So we thank you for your efforts to your staff. We say hang in there. Health is on the way. But we do know that this is a huge undertaking. It will take time to roll out. It will take time to hire people and well over a year to have them trained. So this is not a quick fix. We know you guys are in for the long term. And I believe that council and my colleagues are with you being in for the long term. So thank you. And to my colleagues, thank you again for your efforts. And with that, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Approving ordinance 44, Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rasstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shank?
That's okay. Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations, and for the work that will continue. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 46 entitled only, please?
Second reading of ordinance number 46, 2021. Comprehensive revision and reenactment of the Erie County Government Administrative Code.
Oh, move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Any comments or questions for members of council? Before we vote, Mr. Smith, I want to thank you, the administration, and everybody on the staff and the council, our council colleagues, for the yeoman work on this particular item necessary to keep our government moving as if we're putting oil on the chain to make sure it moves smoothly. But necessary indeed. So thank you for that. And with that, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
An ordinance 46. Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rasstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add for the record that Ms. Anon did the majority of the work on that ordinance. It deserves a lot of credit.
Thank you. We knew Nicole was there in the background. Thank you.
The wind beneath your wings.
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 50 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 50, 2021. 19th, 2021 General Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $44,177 for creation of new physician in the District Attorney Office for Domestic Violence Cases.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Any comments or questions for members of council? Mr. Chairman, Councilman Shank? I'm sorry, Councilman Rasstetter.
I just have a short comment. I want to say that this is a great thing. I'm supporting it 100%. I'm familiar with this system and it is very lacking the way it is. I've seen it happen even just this Monday in Peninsula. A guy, a woman, had a terrible argument and it went on for quite a while. You never know what to do in that situation. But anyhow, yeah, I'm supporting this. I think it's great and it's just another first step in the right direction. Thank you.
Chairman?
Councilman Shank?
We do a lot of work and there's a lot of things we do that we're very proud of. These are one, this is one of those instances where we sign off on this going, where was this 10 years ago? We should have done this 10 years ago. As a guy that's been a first responder, a police officer, I understand the OCY issues. I've seen it firsthand as a first responder. I've seen it firsthand. And the district attorney, I commend them, I salute them for taking this on, and I proudly will support this. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Other council members? I have Councilman Horton for that only.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's no secret that crime is up for a pandemic here. Your kind, I don't think it's just indigenous here, just had a conversation with children. And I know that the pandemic has weighed heavily individuals and families that have not only to deal with the realities of the pandemic, but also mental health, behavioral health, and a myriad of issues. And I just look at this as being in line with the very important resolution that we passed in reduction of administration declaring racism as a crisis. I see this stuff every day in my neighborhood. I grew up in a household where I seen, I have seven sisters, and so, you know, I was a trooper. I remember P.A. 2711, which was a domestic violence law that came in hair to it before that. Police would show up at a residence, the lady would obviously be assaulted, some instances the guy. And they would say, oh, we don't want pressing charges in your league. And after a couple of those resulting in fatalities, domestic law 2711 was, which meant that whenever we walk into your house and we see that anyone has been assaulted, we take someone from the home. And so all too often, I've seen them come to court. And the laws have changed a little bit now before the PFA. But I've seen them come to court, say, I don't want press charges, and they go home. Some, one of them tipped or was killed in the same fight. And so we have an opportunity, again, to address the human condition, be proactively and preventively, because it's not in the standard. This isn't just an enforcement tool. They're going to work with both individual potential perpetrator and that. I just believe that no matter what the condition, whatever situation, good or bad or indifferent, I think that communication is always a bridge to better decades. And I'll be supporting this as well. I have to commit Jack to the staff for being more proactive in a preventative manner instead of always ready to throw the hammer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Horton, for your comments. And I would just echo to commend our district attorney, Jack Denary, a dedicated servant to this county for many, many years and continuing to take a proactive approach to the work that his office does. They don't come and ask us for a lot often, but usually when they do, there's substance to it. And I certainly will be supporting this this evening. With that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Approving ordinance 50, 2021. Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rasstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We will now move on to new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Please do.
I would like to move A, B, C, and C, D, and G, sorry. So A, B, C, D, G to a second reading. And I would also like to amend letter I, yes, the possible sale of a parcel from the repository, rental property. I would like to add a lot in Green Garden Terrace on West 29th Street and Ellsworth Avenue.
I'll sit.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions for members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on amending tonight's agenda?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rasstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Many times when we have items coming into county government that bring money in, council is of the opinion to move those to second so we can, or if items are in some way needing to be moved forward quickly, council amends the agenda as we did tonight on several items. And so now, Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 51 entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 51, 2021. 17th, 2021 General Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation and new line for donation of 25 personal contractor first aid kits to Sheriff Department by JRG Tools LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Shank. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to say a few words.
Councilman Shank?
Thank you. This group came together about two years ago. We didn't really know each other. We have a huge spectrum of people that really care. each other. We have a huge spectrum of people that really care about what they do, a huge spectrum of backgrounds, education, and life experiences. My little niche has always been our first responders and law enforcement. Now, when we did the CARES money, we made sure that our volunteer fire departments were taken care of, which they were. And I want to make sure that the entities that the county has control over, like the Sheriff's Department, we make sure that our men and women in the Sheriff's Department have the proper tools to go to work. When I reached out to the community, I had overwhelming support on this. And these nice, a nice Mac tool guy reached out and says, I'll donate 25 of them for you. So that way, when our first responders, our sheriffs, and the deputies go out on the road, if they come across something, they have the tools to do that. Now, I'm not saying they're advanced paramedics. I get that. But, you know, sometimes it just stop the bleed until the trained professionals get there. So these are the little projects that we take on as council that I'm very proud of and I look back. Thank you.
Councilman Shank, thank you for your efforts on this particular item tonight. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council?
I just, I want to thank our, our council and Shank, too, for its business. Always thinking about looking out for our first responders and by proxy for the entire community. And I'd just like to applaud your mission to thank you, and then the woman of Erie County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. I appreciate it. Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I was going to say the same exact thing. So ditto. No, I wanted just to make sure it's on record to thank you, Councilman Shank, for thinking of this and doing this and take, organizing it. That was, that's really great.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we now have a roll call vote on the second reading of Ordinance 51?
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 52 entitled only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 52, 2021, 20th, 21 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $66,379, and new line item for district services state aid carryover from prior year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Schallerman. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An Ordinance 52, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 53 entitled only?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 53, 2021, second, 2021 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $771,968, and creation of line items for Division X Grant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Schallerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Councilman Horton?
Yes. You know, I guess I'm blessed. There's always those 30 little siblings of us, and we're all a little more than, we're kind of like English twins. My mother's one of the most down south Mississippi families, and she always started all this room to take one more. Turned out, it was on those hands. And so we had 50, 60 foster kids over the decades. I'm sad I own the period of problems. I still see some of those kids, adults, still maintaining relationships. I'm pleased that this bill, this ordinance, has been put forward because I know what happens. A lot of times when kids reach 18, age out, the foster care program, no support system. It's neither the foster care program you have had last ability, then to reach a certain age, say, okay, the services are over. Or you not, not go have to access or continue this. It's a tough thing. Kind of going through that right now with a young lady that my sister, her and her sister, children, they all kind of aged out, but they very much still earn needed services. And so any opportunity that we have to, almost like put the bandaid, still on a gaited moon. But any opportunity that we have to extend the care, and the love, and the concern to those who, all too often, not receive that in the way that one would think that would, that we all are deserving of. And to see them endure, and to arrive into adulthood, and still be broken children, it's kind of tough. And I just look at my 26, 27, 28-year-olds. They have the support that they have, our strong supportive family and village. I see there's still things they need in their life. And so, man, this is OCY day. I'm supporting this. I'm asking my colleagues again, you know, the joy of the support exists. If you have any reservations or other things, please get off this about. There's no greater, there's no greater resource than our, than our children.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please, on the second reading?
An Ordinance 53, Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 54 entitled only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 54, 2021, approving waiver of big requirements of county purchasing code to select Gore's Hanes Printing for Erie County elections in 2021.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Shank. Any comments or questions from members of council?
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Shank?
Thank you. When we sit here on council, we spend the tax dollars. We want to make sure that our tax dollars are spent here in Erie County. Up until we had this company certified, the only place we could send these were out to New York. And our tax dollars, I feel very strongly that our tax dollars that we all pay should stay in Erie County. So it was a real blessing when we had a contractor, a business, step forward and said, I'll go through the testing. And he did it with flying colors. And so we're very proud of a local vendor to keep those tax dollars here in Erie County. And of course, I might be a little more biased for this company because these are my districts. So I drive by this business and beat the wave. We're doing a good job in getting us through the election cycle. So I look back, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council? I just want to mention that we are very fortunate in Erie County to have a company that, number one, has the expertise, but number two, was willing to undertake this particular assignment, which, as our Director of Elections, Mr. Smith, will tell everyone, or at least agree, it's not, it's not an easy job. The changes that probably what Pennsylvania has mandated on Erie County in the Department of Elections, we need to follow what those mandates are. And the taxpayers of Pennsylvania and states around the country have chosen to have paper backup ballots. And there's a cost to that. And with that cost, we have to have the expertise to be able to do that. And we do fortunately have that here in Erie County towards Hanes Printing. Our next ordinance will increase our line item in elections by over $300,000. And that's where I mentioned the cost that comes into following these mandates. We have to make sure, and I'm very proud on behalf of the entire election board, all of our colleagues, and our election department, that elections in Erie County are fair. And when the election is over, everybody is confident in what the outcome is, even if sometimes we don't necessarily like the outcome. But we know that it was done in fairness and with professionalism and with no bias to anybody. And that's how our system works. That's how it's meant to work. And we know in Erie County that we will stay together in unity as it continues to work. So with that, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
An Ordinance 54, 2021, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of Ordinance Number 55, please?
A first reading of Ordinance Number 55, 2021, 21st, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $300,000, and new line item for additional election costs.
So moved. First reading. Yes. Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of Ordinance Number 56, please, entitled only?
A first reading of Ordinance Number 56, 2021, 2021 General Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $1,000, and creation of temporary staff line.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of Ordinance Number 57 entitled only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 57, 2021, 23rd, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $19,953 for creation of inmate services clerk position at the Erie County Prison.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Schallerman, seconded by Councilman Shank. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An Ordinance 57, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of the possible sale of the parcel in a repository and the address at East 20th Street, please?
Possible sale of parcel from repository for unsold property, index number 18-050-013.0209.00 333 East 20th Street, a 41.25 x 135-foot lot.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of the parcel in the repository as amended with the description for the lot on Green, in Green Garden Terrace?
Hopefully I can remember that particular description, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I threw that out there.
Possible sale of parcel from repository for unsold property, at index number 19-062-031.0115.00 Lot number eight. It's a 45 by 119-foot lot at 29th and?
Ellsworth.
Ellsworth.
And Green Garden Terrace.
In Green Garden Terrace.
Terrace.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schallerman, seconded by Councilman Horton. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none. And thank you, Mr. Horton, for catching the glitch there. And thank you to Nicole for, and to Tracy and Jim and Amy for us to be able to catch that and move forward with this tonight. And with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On item I, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schallerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you again for all of you for being here tonight with County Council's summer program to be on the road. It's an honor for us to be here in Albion. Council's next finance and personnel meeting will occur on July 15, 4:00 p.m., back at the Erie County Courthouse. And then our next regular scheduled council meeting will be on the road at Asbury Woods Nature Center on July 20 at 6:00 p.m. Is there any other business to come before council tonight? Seeing none, may we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Council's adjourned.